Good afternoon, everyone, and a very warm welcome to you all. To this, the second virtual special meeting of Perthic and Ross Council. Would you please ensure that all electronic equipment is in silent mode or at least switched off? And please note that today's meeting will be streamed via the microscope teams, and a recording will be publicly available on the council's website following this meeting. As you will all know, this meeting has been called to consider the business that was deferred from the meeting of the 20th of May. So I'm now going to hand over to the Chief Executive, Karen Reed, to take members through the business on the agenda in a similar format to the previous meeting. Karen?
Thank you, Provost. Good afternoon, councillors and colleagues. Councillors, as the Provost has noted, this is a continuation of the special council meeting held on the 20th of May. When we set out the agenda for the meeting on the 20th of May, three to four weeks ago, we did not have much information about our financial position or indeed ideas around recovery and renewal. And therefore, we were intending to hold the meeting in private session. However, following discussions with our senior officers last week, and indeed alongside information from COSLA and Scottish Government, we now know more, and it's my belief that this meeting should be held in the public interest and indeed in the spirit of openness and transparency, that we share as much information as we publicly can do about the potential financial risks facing the sustainability of this council. But equally so, in every crisis comes the opportunity to do things differently, do things better, and indeed strengthen our focus on communities, citizens, businesses, visitors, partners, and our staff. So on that basis, this meeting is now a public meeting. This afternoon, you will hear from colleagues firstly about our projected financial position and secondly about our plans for recovery and renewal. So on that basis, I'm going to hand over to Karen Donaldson and Stuart Mackenzie to take us through as much as we know about the financial position. You will appreciate that the financial position will change over coming weeks and months as we begin to know more information. But what you will hear this afternoon does not paint a very pretty picture for Perthic and Ross Council. It will set in context the expenditure pressures the council is facing and also the loss of income that we are experiencing. It will set out what we know, and it will also set out some known unknowns that will impact on the financial sustainability of the council. After we've had the presentation, it's my intention to stop the presentation and to take questions and comments. When you make your question, please, please keep it short and succinct, no more than a minute or two to ask your question. As part of the briefing this afternoon, we will only be focusing on the financial update and recovery and renewal. If you do have questions pertaining to your ward and constituency matters, please direct those through elected member inquiries. So I'll now hand over to Karen Donaldson. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councillors. Good afternoon, colleagues. On the 6th of March, the council approved a balanced revenue budget for 2020/21. That budget was set in the context of financial pressures, demographic pressures, and unmet need, as well as delivering on council ambitions for climate change, tackling child poverty, supporting inclusive economic growth, investing in communities, as well as transformation. While some of the elements of the budget may have proved challenging, the budget in the main was deliverable. Since then, the council has turned its full attention and prioritized resources to our response to the COVID-19 virus. Everyone has been affected, our citizens, our communities, our businesses, learners, employees, and visitors. And at the present time, there are still huge uncertainties about its final impact as we ease out of the current lockdown and progress towards what will become our new reality. Council staff, partners, and communities have all stepped up to provide an overwhelming response to the immediate challenges we have faced, providing essential public services and support for vulnerable people and families, and safeguarding the health and wellbeing of our staff. This presentation summarizes the high-level impact of the COVID-19 virus on Perthic and Ross Council's operations and its budget ahead of a more detailed report later this year. At this stage, it's simply not possible to say with any certainty what the direct financial impact on the council will be, except that it will be significant. All will depend on how quickly we feel that impact, its scale, how long the impacts last, and the trajectory to recovery or to a new reality. Through weekly meetings with the council's sounding board, officers have provided updates on the financial position, highlighting many of the factors which will impact on our longer-term financial position. And at this stage, we've identified additional expenditure pressures, increased support for some partner organizations, income streams which are under threat, anticipated savings which are no longer achievable, and increasing demand for council services. All of this means that the balanced budget set in March is now at risk through the impact of the COVID-19 virus, which in turn will also exacerbate the situation the council knew would be facing of closing a budget gap of circa £5.5 million by 2022/23. So there are many significant unknown factors and uncertainties as we ease out of lockdown through the four stages of recovery in the Scottish government's plans and also for the longer term. And I'm going to highlight some of these here. The financial sustainability of the council is inextricably linked not only to our response but also to recovery and renewal. And it's therefore apt that the second presentation this afternoon is about the strategic approach to recovery and renewal. What is clear is that the context for our current financial strategy has changed beyond recognition as we face requirements to provide new services and meet increased demand in others, such as welfare and support. And the way services need to be delivered will change too, bringing with them additional costs. In terms of education, early learning and childcare, we will see additional costs associated with the return to school through that blend of in-school learning and learning at home as arrangements are made to ensure that physical distancing, appropriate cleaning regimes, and PPE provision all safeguard the health, safety, and wellbeing of our young people and staff alike. We have been providing children's activity centers for some months now in order to provide childcare support for key workers. This will continue over the holiday period and when schools are back in August, but the longer term is not yet clear. There are also associated costs with school meal provisions, whether that be holidays or beyond when schools are moving back. And there's also wider welfare provision where we'll see increased demand for services, in particular considering social work services who will end up picking up the longer-term impacts of the COVID virus within our communities. We do not know yet the extent of the impact on the wider Perthic and Ross economy as businesses close and jobs are lost. Some of the immediate impacts are being addressed at the moment through the provision of welfare and financial support. However, we will be looking at ways of stimulating economic recovery and helping us prepare the economy for the future. And finally, there are inflationary pressures on the capital budget, whether this be projects which have been paused or whether this is projects for contracts that we have not yet committed to. I'm going to hand over now to Stuart Mackenzie, who will take you through the high-level analysis based on what we know today. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, and good afternoon, colleagues and councillors. As the Chief Executive noted, COVID-19 is placing significant pressure on the council's finances. This slide summarizes the latest position reported to the sounding board. COSLA are collecting cost information at a national level, and similar pressures are being reported by all Scottish local authorities. Additional expenditure arising from the council's response is currently estimated at £6.8 million and will increase as welfare services are maintained and service delivery is adapted to accommodate social distancing. Income from charges is currently estimated to be £3.6 million lower than expected. This excludes council taxing... Excuse me, this excludes council tax and dexterity rates and represents only part of the pressure on council income. I set it in the next two slides. Pressures from the non-acquisition of savings are currently estimated at £800,000. As responding to COVID-19 has meant that not all of the preparatory work is necessary to deliver savings has progressed. And as reported to be integrated from joint board last week, additional expenditure in social care is currently estimated at £5.6 million. Again, this will increase as a phase transition to full service recovery is undertaken. Taken together, these additional expenditure pressures currently total £16.8 million. It is, however, important to stress that this reflects the position at a point in time. The estimates, in many cases, only show additional costs until the end of June, and the position will change as the council moves from response to recovery. COSLA are currently working with finance officers on projecting the full year financial impact on councils of COVID-19 to evidence and inform discussions with the Scottish government over funding. We have the next slide, please. Thank you. COVID-19 is expected to have a major impact on the Scottish economy and household incomes. In turn, there is considerable risk to the council's income from local taxes. Although it would take several months to establish a reliable trend, council tax collection in April was down 0.7% on the equivalent position last year. This slide shows the impact in council tax income of different levels of non-collection in the current year, including a cumulative impact of £7.6 million if April's collections replicated throughout the year. There are two aspects to this issue. Cash flow may reduce through an increase in non-collection in the current year, and this will impact on the 2020/21 budget. However, the income remains due to the council, and the longer-term issue may be a growth in the level of irrecoverable council tax debt in future years. As members will be aware, the council's local taxes team have been focused on administering the business grant schemes. And in common with most local authorities, the council will issue non-domestic rates bills towards the end of this month. We have the next slide, please. Could we go back one, please? Thank you. Taking the additional expenditure identified to date and the potential reduction in council tax income, the scale of a financial challenge facing the council from COVID-19 is currently estimated at £24.4 million. Now, this is a broad estimate based upon costs at the point in time and will inevitably change and be refined as the council's response to COVID-19 develops. This position is, in part, only based upon cost estimates to the end of June and does not take full account of the cost of additional service delivery and service redesign. While some alerts are included within the estimates, up to £25 million of council income from the provision of a range of services is currently identified as being uncertain or at risk. The assumption of an 8% reduction in council tax collection is not at this time a projection, but only one scenario, and would still require the council to maintain high levels of annual collection. And in summary, COVID-19 represents a major challenge to the council's finances. However, the full implications remain uncertain, and the current estimate of circa £25 million does not include all additional costs or reductions in income, and may be considerably more. We have the next slide, please. This slide summarizes the additional funding the Scottish government have made available to date through local authorities in response to COVID-19, and as far as the council's share of this funding were known. The first three items relate to grant support for local businesses and nearly self-employed, with the council as administering schemes on behalf of the Scottish government, and elected members had an update on that position at the last meeting. The next four items come under the heading of support for communities. The hardship fund is a general allocation to assist councils with their response. Scottish Welfare Fund and Council Tax Reduction Scheme monies provide additional funding for those facing financial hardship, while councils have been allocated £30 million from an overall £70 million food fund to support vulnerable individuals and families in the non-shielded category. The Scottish government have also passed on £155 million in barnet consequentials from additional UK treasury funding in England, with the council's share of this being £4.272 million. In addition to the above, the Scottish government have also made around £1 billion available to provide non-domestic rates relief in 2021. There has also been an initial allocation of £50 million for social care, with the Perthic and Ross Health and Social Care Partnership being allocated approximately £1.4 million of this sum. We have the next slide, please. In terms of financial support, the focus over the last two months has been on supporting local businesses, both through the grant scheme and through accelerating supplier payments, and on supporting individuals and families in need. £32.2 million has been paid to date to local businesses through the Small Business Grant Scheme, and the further £372,000 paid in grants to nearly self-employed. There has been a significant increase in demand for support for the welfare fund, and almost £93,000 has been paid in crisis grants to individuals and families in extreme financial need. Payments on lieu of free school meals have been made to all eligible families since the end of March. And the council's standard terms of business have been temporarily suspended, with supplier and provider payments now being made within seven days. All recovery action on debt due to the council has been temporarily suspended, and the council's benefits, welfare rights, and housing teams have been supporting individuals and families experiencing financial difficulties. I'll now pass back to Karen to set up the next steps.
Can I have the next slide, please, Audrey? So in terms of next steps, we will continue to provide regular updates to the elected member sounding board. And we have created a new recovery and renewal member officer working group, where officers and members can start to explore the key risks and opportunities around both recovery and renewal, with subsequent decisions by members of the council on the strategic direction that we take. This will include looking at the council's financial sustainability. The next council meeting is due to take place on the 24th of June, where we will provide the latest financial update. Over July and August, there will be further work on recovery and renewal, including financial sustainability. And that will take us to the end of August, early September, where we will be holding elected member briefings on finance and recovery and renewal. The next council meeting would be on the 30th of September, at which time we would have options for managing the council's response in 2021 alongside a review of the medium-term financial plan. That concludes the presentation, councillors. Thank you.
Karen, Stuart, many thanks for the presentation. Councillors, just to be clear, what we are talking about at the moment is very much a projection, but circa £25 million. And when you add in the known unknowns in terms of potential loss of income, we could be looking at anything between £25 to just over £50 million in this financial year. So on that note, I should have asked if there's any declaration of interest, albeit you made the declaration of interest at the special council meeting on the 20th of May. But if anything has changed for you, please indicate now by typing DI in the meeting chat. And then we will move on to questions. Okay, on the basis that I haven't received any declarations of interest, can you please type Q in the chat function, and I will bring you in to ask your questions? So can I take first off councillor Bronn, please?
Thank you, Chief Executive. It's a question perhaps either for yourself or Mr Mackenzie. From the figures he's saying, we're £25 million in debt or potential debt. This is going to affect not just us, every other council throughout Scotland and the UK. And I wonder your opinion, should this really be treated as effectively a national disaster for us and for every other local authority? And should we be looking for disaster relief from our central government, either the Scottish government or the UK government, to help us with this? It doesn't seem right that we should be looking to find this £25 million all ourselves. And I just wonder if you have the same opinion, that we should be treated as a national disaster now?
So councillor Bronn, thank you for the question. First off, I need to make sure that everybody fully understands we're not talking specifically about £25 million. We're talking about a broad scale of £25 to £50 million of impact for this council. And secondly, it's not for me to answer the question about whether this is a national emergency. What I can do, however, is tell you the steps are currently in place. So COSLA leaders have discussed this in detail, and they are looking at various options, including supporting the Scottish government to write to the Treasury to look at whether there are any more UK consequentials, looking at the borrowing capacity of councils, and looking at other mechanisms in terms of how to manage the impact. As you say, it's not just Perthic and Ross who are affected by this, but many other councils across the country. So a whole range of mitigations are being looked at between Scottish government and COSLA, as well as as contact with the UK government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I turn to councillor Williamson, please? Councillor Williamson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My question was about the council tax, and I was wondering, do we have any indication of how many people have cancelled their direct debits for the council tax and maybe opted to take a two-month holiday now rather than at the end of the year?
Thank you. I'll ask Stuart Mackenzie to answer that, please.
Thank you, councillor Williamson, for your question. I don't have exact figures, but the trend was, as lockdown commenced in March, a significant number of households chose to cancel their direct debits for council tax, far more than the normal seasonal trend. However, after the announcement of the furlough scheme, a considerable number of families changed that position and entered into direct debits for council tax, but many of them chose, rather than pay over 10 months, to pay over 12 months. So the position is unclear at the moment, but we have experienced an initial reduction in the number of householders choosing to pay by direct debit. That position began to correct itself after the announcement of the furlough scheme.
Thank you. Councillor Lane, please.
Hello. Thanks, Karen, and thanks for the presentation from Stuart and another Karen. My question's back to, it was earlier on, about the capital budget that'll have to be revisited. Are officers actively looking at things that we may have entered into, some contractual obligations that we really can't afford now to push forward? And is there any way in legislation or anything because of this crisis that agreements we've entered into, if we deem that we can't afford them and are not beneficial at this time, that we can remove ourselves from them?
So officers are currently looking at both the revenue and indeed the capital program. You'll recall councillor Lane, that we were actually due to set the capital budget in June. We're anticipating bringing back all the information through a whole variety of briefings during the July-August period for decision-making by full council in September. Of course, we will be looking at all the agreements that we've entered into in terms of the capital program and bringing that back for all elected members to make the decision at full council.
Thanks.
Councillor Illingworth, please.
All right, thank you. The presentation mentioned the Scottish Welfare Fund. My understanding was that this was funded by the Scottish government and not by us or not directly by us. So should that be included in the presentation?
Stuart Mackenzie, please.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Thank you for your question, councillor Illingworth. We receive an allocation for all funding from the Scottish government, from the Scottish Welfare Fund. However, the pressure on that allocation has been considerable. So what's reflected in the presentation is the additional cost we're anticipating on top of the normal level of payments we would have for crisis grants. Now, there is some additional provision made within the figures on the next by the Scottish government for local authorities, but we are experiencing a high level of demand for crisis grants in the welfare fund at the moment.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Donaldson, please.
Thank you. Could I just follow up on councillor Illingworth's question about the welfare fund? Obviously, one's aware of the full enormity of the situation overall. But following on what Stuart Mackenzie stated, and I recall audit, we had a very good presentation from Lyn Brady and Nicholas Southall a number of months back. With the increased demand, have staff, I would assume, been redeployed to that area? But on an ongoing basis, with the increased demand likely to continue, do we have sufficient there in terms of staff capacity? Or is that an area that's being reviewed?
Stuart Mackenzie, please.
Thank you, Chief Executive, and thank you for your question, councillor Donaldson. On the first point, with a move to homeworking, that's created some challenges. Colleagues in the welfare rights team have actually moved to shift working to extend the availability of staff for contact with members of the public. So the virtual opening hours have increased. The situation continues to be monitored in terms of managing demand. Colleagues have been coping at the moment, but we keep that under review because we are aware of the pressures.
Can I just say thank you for that response? And I can only assume that they are working under very considerable pressures. It can't be an easy task, especially working from home. But certainly, you know, for later in the year, one would assume that the increased demand is likely to be there still. And it is a question of, it seems to me, of overall staff capacity and can we meet that demand on an ongoing basis? But thank you.
Councillor Donaldson, if I may add to Stuart Mackenzie's response to you, we are actively looking at workforce planning across the whole of our workforce because, as you may imagine, and you've rightly identified, that this situation in relation to COVID will continue for some time ahead. So we are looking at how we best support our staff, how we manage capacity, and how we manage our workforce for the future. So thank you for raising that. Councillor Parrott, please.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Going back to Stuart Mackenzie's presentation, to what degree are the costs he's quoting for the additional expenditure extrapolated to cover the rest of the year? Or is it simply additional costs to date? And costs over the rest of the year is what might take the figure from £25 million to £50 million. Thank you.
So thank you, Stuart. Would you like to answer, please?
Thank you, councillor Parrott, for your question. The answer is that the costs are only extrapolated in part. So there's maybe three elements to this. We have additional costs estimated to the end of June, where we can. Where we can extrapolate those costs, we've attempted to do that, but only to a limited extent. And that work has actually been coordinated at the moment by COSLA to try and provide a more consistent... to try and provide a more consistent basis for doing this. In terms of income, we really haven't built in all of the potential challenges we have over income nor extrapolated those figures over the course of a financial year. So in summary, yes, that's what could move the numbers into an even more challenging position.
Thank you for that. If I can come back, it might be fair to say that we might get greater definition at the meeting later in June. But for now, 25 million is the minimum, 50 million is the foreseen maximum, but that gap will close over the coming period. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Lyle, please. Councillor Lyle, please.
Hello. Apologies for that. I'd started with my mute on. Anyway, just to say thank you very much for the presentation this afternoon to Karen and Stuart. And it's very helpful, although quite sobering. Just one of the things that Stuart identified was Barnet consequentials of 4.272 million coming into the council. I wondered when they came in because it was mentioned on COSLA last week that the Scottish government hadn't passed them on to the local authorities.
Stuart, would you like to answer, please?
Thank you for your question councillor Lyle. We actually had an update on that position today. We anticipate receiving the money in stage payments over June.
In stage payments. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Redd.
Thank you Karen. Can I understand a little bit of detail, please, around school meals? I understand we've been paying free school meal provision in cash every fortnight, which has been greatly appreciated and a lifesaver genuinely for some families I know for sure in my constituency. But we have school meals as an additional expenditure. I'd quite like just to understand, given that most of our kids have not been at school, why that's an additional expenditure, please?
Of course. I'll ask Sheena Devlin to respond in the first instance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheena, are you available? Okay, I think Sheena's having issues with her technology at this moment in time. So I'll ask Stuart Mackenzie to respond with the financial detail.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rebick for your question. What we have is a situation whereby we are making payment to our normal provider, TES contracts, at the moment. But we also have been making cash payments in lieu of meals. So we have both cost pressures and no income. So that's why you're seeing a cost pressure.
And councillor Rebick, if I could add to that, please. In the National Strategic Framework published just over a week ago, there was clear instruction given that free school meals should continue during the holiday period. And that's an additional cost to the council that we don't have income for either.
That's perfect sense. Thanks very much Stuart. Thank you Karen.
Councillor McCall, please.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. I think my question is for Mr Mackenzie and it refers to the part of the presentation that is regarding the business grant scheme. I noticed that 80% has been received to date and then the support for the self-employed is showing that 60% has been received to date. By my quick calculations, that's about nine and a half million that we haven't received. Are we taking that nine and a half million into consideration regarding the part of the deficit that we have? Or is that money that has not been taken into consideration, basically?
Stuart, would you like to respond to that, please?
Thank you councillor McCall. Effectively, the business grants funding and the funding for the newly self-employed were passporting money on behalf of the Scottish government. So part of the grant condition is that we overturn any grant we receive which is not expended on those purposes. So it's not factored into our calculations because effectively it's not our money.
That's lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stuart, please.
Thank you. So I noted during the introduction to the presentation, we were told that the way services are being delivered at the moment brings additional costs and that that was likely to continue into the future. I just wonder whether that's too much of an assumption to make. The way that services are being delivered is certainly changing, but the way that services are being delivered can continue to change. And that doesn't necessarily have to bring additional costs in the future. But specifically two questions. The presentation indicated that there were inflationary pressures on the capital budget. And I wondered whether that was, again, I wonder whether that's a safe assumption to make? Because, you know, with the downturn that the construction industry has seen recently, the prospect of negative interest rates, whether in actual fact there could be deflationary pressures on the capital budget. So that's the first question. Second question is, when are we setting up the process of going through and reviewing the capital budget? You indicated, Chief Executive, that we were going to get briefings out during July and August for a decision in September. I just wondered whether those were briefings coming out or whether there was going to be feedback accepted from members in the normal way with the Budget Review Group process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll take your latter point first, please. It's absolutely the intention to undertake briefings and question and answer sessions with elected members during July and August so that what we bring back to full council is an informed position in terms of the elected member decision-making around the capital programme. So I hope that is helpful in terms of allaying any fears. The second point in terms of the capital budget and inflation or perhaps deflation, I'm sure Stuart's better served to answer that than I. But what I can tell you is from the evidence that we're seeing at the moment, then construction inflation is very much alive and kicking. I'll hand over to Stuart Mackenzie on that matter.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Yes, we'd been experiencing a such inflation, obviously, before the COVID-19 pandemic. I don't know if my colleague Stephen Crawford, who's our Head of Property, is on at this meeting, should I say. He'd be better placed than I to advise. But my understanding is that the level of efficiency in construction companies and firms will be able to operate at will be significantly reduced because of the impact of social distancing. So as we give ourselves up to a different way of working, their productivity will reduce and the costs may accordingly increase, the labour costs may accordingly increase. The other thing is the supply chain. Again, I understand that in contrast to England, where around about 70 to 80% of construction has remained in place. In Scotland, only 7% of construction has remained in place. So there'll obviously be a giving up effect on the supply chain.
Okay, thank you. Can I turn to councillor Purvis, please?
Thank you, Chief Executive, and thank you to the Chief Operating Officer and Head of Finance for their presentations, which were very useful. I just wanted to refer to a comment that was made about COSLA leaders and the discussions there and the indication that they were going to be writing to the Treasury asking for more money. It seems to me that, given the £10 billion of support the Treasury has already contributed to Scotland, three and a half billion of Barnet consequentials, nearly five billion from the Farrow scheme and additional money for the self-employed and for loans, that perhaps the focus should be on asking what the Scottish government's contribution will be to support local government. I think the Scottish government have only contributed half a billion from their own budgets at this moment in time. So notwithstanding the commitment that's been made to fund the health and social care mobilisation plans, I was just wondering what specific discussions have been had with the Scottish government to ask what they will be contributing towards this effort.
Okay, thank you councillor Purvis. You will appreciate it far from me to enter into dialogue around the COSLA ask of UK government. In terms of Scottish government, my understanding is that COSLA and Scottish government continue to work together to look at the financial impact of COVID-19. But at the moment, there is certainly no further UK consequentials or any indication that I'm aware of other funding coming through from Scottish government. But I do believe it's a live issue that continues to be discussed with Scottish government and COSLA. Okay, thank you. Councillor Forbes, please.
Thank you Karen. Councillor Purvis has asked a very similar question to the one I was going to ask, but mine's maybe slightly different. Going back to any discussions we've had with the Scottish government, it's obvious they won't be proceeding with things like 11:40 hour childcare, some construction projects, I think even construction of the A9 dueling has been suspended. Have they ever suggested that some of the money that they're not spending on that could come the way of local authorities? It strikes me that we are right at the end of the chain and therefore the ones who are probably going to have to find some more money than we've got.
So firstly, I do recall reading a media article suggesting that the A9 was going to continue, but that's a matter for Scottish government. Secondly, we have had flexibility in terms of how we use ELC 11:40 hours and flexible use of that funding, given the issues that are around at this moment in time. So I hope that answers your question councillor Forbes. Councillor Donaldson?
Hello. Right, I'm not going to get into the whole thing of the Scottish government, the UK government. I think the one key thing to find out, as councillor Lyle mentioned, was that we and Stuart Mackenzie has stated, there's quite clearly that 4.3 million in Barnet consequentials is coming through to the council in June. I want to follow up on the question raised by councillor Stuart. It's really on the capital budget to ask, effectively, is that now, at the moment, a known unknown? It's just on the inflationary pressures we cannot quantify. But the obverse of that is that we have seen the UK government issuing government securities guilt at negative interest rates, whether that will be a long-term trend. But can I ask Stuart Mackenzie, what is the position on financing costs? And that applies not just to council debt, but potentially if we move to negative interest rates, the position with the council's own investments, monies held on money market account and such like, where we might conceivably have to actually be charged for holding funds on bank deposit?
Okay, Stuart Mackenzie, please.
Thank you councillor Donaldson for your question. And colleagues who may have elected member, colleagues may have anticipated that. And I'm slightly ready for this because I was expecting perhaps a question on our borrowing and investment strategy from you. In terms of the current PWLB rates, they're actually still relatively low. 50-year money is around 2.25% at the moment. Slightly more for shorter-term money, but 50-year money is at 2.25%. In terms of our own investments, our average interest rate at the moment is just shy of 1%. Our investments currently total £196.4 million. That reflects the position where we took borrowing in advance to fund the approved capital budget earlier in the year. So we have a significant amount in investments. Those investments, the return on those investments ranged between 1.25% and 0.9%. But the average is just under 1% at the moment.
Thank you Stuart. Sorry, councillor Donaldson, did you want to ask something else?
No, I'm not really going to follow up on that. I think we will probably get more detail in briefing sessions later on. But I think it is an uncertain factor.
Absolutely. Councillor Duff, please. Councillor Duff, please.
Sorry, it's taken me a second to unmute the mic there, Chief Executive. My question, a couple of related questions really. In relation to the 25 to 50 million pounds debt that the council might find itself in, it's made up of extra expense, obviously, but also reduced income. So my question is, how much of it is about reduced income? And in relation to irrecoverable debts, such as the non-payment of council tax, has the Scottish government indicated whether or not we will receive any assistance with this eventual shortfall? Or will it be for local authorities to pursue it with individuals or to subsume that debt into our own budget?
Okay, so I can answer the latter question. There's been no indication from Scottish government that there'll be support for managing any debt that each and every council across Scotland finds themselves in. Stuart, would you like to answer the first point, please?
Thank you, Chief Executive, and thank you for your question councillor Duff. We've modeled 7.6 million pounds of a potential reduction in our collection levels, like so much of the presentation and so much of this afternoon's discussion. That is extremely uncertain. I would hope that our position would be better, but the pressure on household incomes is going to be likely reflected in our collection assumptions. And that's the case for every local authority in Scotland. As I said, there's two aspects to this. One is the immediate impact on our cash flow by not having the income in year. But the medium to longer term question is, that remains an recoverable debt. And our experience to date is that we're still recovering council tax which fell due 10 years ago. So we have a good history of entering into arrangements with customers or customers entering into arrangements with us and covering debt over a protracted period. But the question, I suppose, is the wider one about the local economy and how sustainable that position will be going forward.
Thank you Stuart. Councillor Bronn, please.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Just a question again on council tax. We've mentioned that obviously people are not paying at the moment, deferring payment due to the lack of income. They are still legally obliged to make those payments. Do we have a strategy in place or thought of a strategy of how they're going to make up those payments? Are they going to be expected to make up the payments during this financial year? Or will we allow them to carry over the technical arrears into the next financial year? Have we any idea how we're going to do this yet?
Stuart, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Chief Executive. Thank you councillor Bronn. My local taxes colleagues have a history of trying to be as responsive in supporting customers make payments. So we will enter into arrangements where we can for those customers who are experiencing, or households experiencing severe financial difficulty with the council tax reduction scheme. And there is additional funding being provided by the Scottish government for the council tax reduction scheme. That works a little bit like housing benefits in terms of council tax. But the intention would be to support households as best we can within the powers we have in making payments. And that may be over an extended period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Parrott, please.
Thank you, Chief Executive. In the light of recent media comment, can I ask the more general question of, are we in the position where we are lending to or borrowing from other local authorities at the moment? The short answer now would be great, and if there's detail, I'd be happy to wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you Stuart.
We are lending to other local authorities councillor Parrott at the moment. We have approximately £34 million lent out to other local authorities, both in Scotland and England and Wales. The return on that short-term lending has been quite positive. And so we are in a position, because we borrowed to finance our capital expenditure at an early stage and that was reported to council, that we have a significant amount of, or a relatively large amount, a level of investments and we have been trying to match. large amount, a level of investments, and we have been trying to maximise income at the moment.
councillor Barrett, I think your microphone's on mute.
Thank you very much for that. But we're not borrowing at the moment from other local authorities.
No, we're not.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last councillor looking to ask a question. If you are seeking to ask questions, please make it known now and thereafter. I will turn to any comments you wish to make. councillor McCall, Sheila McCall. councillor McCall.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, thank you.
My question really is to ask whether or not there is any parallel work going on to conduct an impact assessment on services related to the short, potential shortfall in budget. I'm particularly concerned is always about those people who are the most vulnerable in our society and those who rely very heavily on services that the council provide as part of their core service offering to members of the public. So if there's something, it'd be useful to know if that impact assessment is taking place and when we might see an outcome from that.
So councillor McCall, we are looking at an impact assessment across services and indeed looking at the impact across communities and drawing both of those together to give us an evidence base around what we're seeing in relation to COVID-19. And that will be brought forward to the recovery and renewal member officer working group and indeed the group leaders who sit on that to help inform a strategic direction in terms of how we take the council forward. So it's an important point, thank you.
If I may ask a follow-up?
Of course, yeah.
Are we also planning to model on perhaps additional support from services for those who may have experienced perhaps mental health issues or new, new requirements that may, people may need going forward, not just based on existing service provision?
Yes, absolutely. It's really quite critical in terms of how we look at the types of services that people need and what they want and how we actually support them. And it really leads into the next presentation in terms of the Perth and Kynos offer and recovery and renewal, about how we can potentially look at doing things differently into the future.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm now going to move to comments. Can I ask councillor Barrett, please? Peter Barrett.
And thank you, chief executive. I just wanted to comment very briefly on the issue that was raised with regard to COSLA's action in response to future funding and the predicament that local government finds itself in. At COSLA leaders on Friday, there was deep concerns expressed by COSLA leaders about the Scottish Government's apparent failure to recognise the full year impact of increased cost and loss of income, as well as the additional costs that councils were going to face as we try to recover from the, the, the COVID crisis. In a motion put forward by the Liberal Democrat and the, the Labour groups, COSLA recognised that situation and also agreed to write to the cabinet secretary for finance to raise with her the, our concerns that there were additional resources required to deliver essential services as we come out of COSLA, sorry, as we come out of COVID in Scotland.
Thank you councillor Barrett, that's quite correct. Any further comments councillor Rebick, please?
Thank you again, Karen. Just very briefly, it certainly strikes me that constituents and residents, citizens of Perth and Kynos are suffering now from COVID and are likely to continue suffering into the near future. And I think it's entirely appropriate that we do things to help people now and into the near future. I think we can argue a little bit later on about where the money comes from, although it does strike me again, of the three authorities, Perth and Kynos, council, UK government and Scottish government, the only one of these three institutions which is not capable of borrowing is the Scottish government actually. And maybe in that sense, might be slightly less able to, to, to bring ourselves out of, out of this trouble. But I think it is appropriate that we help the citizens of Perth and Kynos now and worry to some extent a little bit later about what we do about that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rebick. councillor Lane, please.
Thanks, chief executive. And my comment is, I think that across the political divides within this council, we're going to have to work together if we're going to achieve the best for, for our citizens. We can all put forward an argument of who's, who should be coming up with more money and that's splitting down political lines. We've been an hour on and most of the conversation's been about that. And that is important, I suppose, to people in the long run, but I think it's more important that we get stuck in together with officers and try and find the best way out of it for our citizens. And we'll all have to work together to achieve that.
Thank you. councillor Purvis, did you want to make a comment?
It was just simply to point out the fact that the Scottish Government does have the capacity to borrow. There may be a debate about what the magnitude of that is, but the Scottish Government does have the ability to borrow to some extent.
If I can just add a point of clarity, please, in terms of borrowing, the discussion at COSLA was about the potential for local government to borrow to fund the revenue gap. Clearly, we can undertake capital borrowing, but it would require a change to accounting principles if Scottish, if, sorry, local government were to undertake revenue borrowing to bridge the impact of COVID. So just to be clear about that, please. Can I now go to councillor Forbes, please, for comment?
Thank you, Karen. I've just sent a note to cancel my comment, councillor Purvis made it for me, thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. Can I go to councillor McDade? Did you wish to make a comment?
No, Karen, I was just providing further information on the chat function about the Scottish Government's capacity. So quite happy.
Thank you. councillor Rebick, is it same for yourself?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I just wanted to make the point and reiterate that let's make sure our citizens are looked after now and worry about it later, at least to some extent.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further comments councillors? Okay, I shall take that as a no. We're just coming up to three o'clock. On that basis, can I suggest that we reconvene at 10 past three, where we'll go into the presentation and briefing on recovery and renewal. Thank you for your contribution so far. We'll be back at 10 past three. Councillors, it's now 10 past three, we will resume the meeting. So if I can have the first slide up, please, colleagues for recovery and renewal. First slide, please, colleagues. Back one more to just to the covering slide, please. Thank you. Councillors, this presentation and briefing sets out some initial high-level thinking to enable elected members to undertake their role in setting the strategic direction of Perth and Kynos council into the future, against the backdrop that you've heard around the financial sustainability facing Perth and Kynos for the foreseeable future. A member officer working group comprising of sounding board group leaders is being established. And as I say, that has representation from all the political groups. So if I can move on to the first slide, please, which effectively sets out the Scottish Government national approach and principles and timescales to renew their programme in terms of recovering from COVID. You'll see it has a strong focus on health, given that we are dealing with a global health pandemic, but also a very strong focus on the economy. pandemic, but also a very strong focus on the economy. And lastly, both the health and the economy focus are underpinned by the key role of local resilience partnerships in managing civil contingencies. Along the bottom of the slide you'll see the timescale for that and you will see that new normal is not predicted for some time yet. So I thought it was just helpful to set that in context in terms of how we are proposing that we take forward the Perth and Conroth recovery and renewal programme. If I can have the next slide please colleagues. So effectively what we are setting out and what we have seen over recent weeks since lockdown is community empowerment in action. The resilience of our citizens and particularly children and young people and their families, as well as the kindness and compassion of those who volunteered, our community groups, our businesses, our statutory partners and indeed our third sector gives us the confidence that in Perth and Conroth we have the foundation to build an even more aspirational, equal and fair society across our local area. In essence, councillors, what we have seen is the Perth and Conroth offer in action and we suggest that our recovery and renewal plan must harness the many positives and strengths we've seen around the key themes of the Perth and Conroth offer. So our focus on the economy, education, environment, equalities needs to underpin how we actually take forward our response to renewal, recovery and indeed how we create a new way of working and being for everyone living in the local area. So I'm now going to talk, so I'm now going to hand over to Claire to talk us through the suggested framework of how together we can actually achieve this. But bear in mind, this is the first initial thought process around the framework. It must be informed in terms of the strategic direction by the Member Officer Working Group and indeed all of you shaping the strategic direction of where this council is going to go in weeks, months and years ahead. Claire.
Thank you Karen. Could I have the high level plan on a page up? Okay, thank you. Now, I appreciate this is probably quite difficult. We have sent this out separately, so I don't know whether it will be easier to view the plan. There's a lot of detail on it on your own laptops, but we'll try and zoom in where we can. As Karen says, this is our recovery and renew plan on a page. I would stress it absolutely is an initial draft. We need to be flexible and agile in approach, so the plan very much will be reviewed as our thinking develops. The plan articulates what we aim to achieve through our recovery and renew strategy and importantly, how we will do this. The higher level aims of the strategy are to ensure that we recover from the impacts of Covid-19 and as Karen says, develop a stronger economy and become a more sustainable and prosperous place to live and work. The strategy again, as Karen has said, will enable us to add pace to the offer. The experience of the pandemic has brought out the very best in people and has shown that everybody has something to offer. So we want to learn from our experiences of the pandemic, build an even better council underpinned around the five Es as Karen has described. So if somebody could zoom in on the top left hand blue box in the corner, I don't know if you're able to do that, our key objectives. I don't know, Audrey, are you controlling this? Could you zoom in to the top left hand corner with the objectives for me please?
Sorry, I'm not sure that I can at the moment.
Right. Okay, I'll, I'll talk through it. I think everybody's got their own copy. So the underpinning objectives are to externally engage with and listen to our communities to understand how the coronavirus pandemic has impacted on them. And I know there was some discussion this morning or at the earlier session in terms of our impact assessment. We want to understand what is different now, what has worked well. We also need to understand what's not worked quite so well and what we need to stop, start and keep doing as we move forward. We need to continue to build on the very effective relationships that we've developed and ensure that one council approach continues where all resources are connected together to support the effective delivery of our agreed outcomes. The intended outcomes, and I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at this, are in the right hand corner in the green box and they're very much, I'll talk through them, round and about a clearer approach where we enhance these relationships with communities to create that shared purpose. And that we have as an outcome, a shared plan that very much is informed by people, communities and our key stakeholders and an integrated, more flexible model of service delivery designed around people and place with a focus on the most vulnerable. And ultimately, what we want to achieve at the end of this recovery programme is a new vision for Perth and Conroth designed around the five Es. So we're proposing that our work streams and they're the blue boxes that you see down in the left hand corner will mirror the five Es. And what we intend to use is the three horizons model to take us from where we are now to where we need to be in the future. So the three horizons framework enables future visioning and learning and it supports participants to think differently. So emerging change, such as the current pandemic, will challenge our current assumptions about how things are and about how they might be in the future. As over time, many of today's ways of working will become obsolete and as we've heard in terms of the financial impact, that will be absolutely a key consideration as we go forward. The framework provides an approach to consider the current and emerging situation in Perth and Conroth and for the council and to use this to identify what needs to be different going forward into the future. So if we look at the middle of the diagram, you'll see the green blob on the left hand side within the middle framework. This is what we call the first horizon. So during the first horizon between now and August, we intend to undertake a wide range of engagement activity to understand the impacts of the pandemic. So this will include community impact assessments, service recovery and renew assessments, a wide range of stakeholder engagement activities, feedback and involvement through the Member Officer Working Group. We'll undertake a risk workshop to identify emerging risks and issues. And we also will need to undertake an evidence based evaluation. So based on emerging evidence, both locally and also nationally, we'll undertake quite detailed benchmarking and an evaluation of emerging best practice. So that's the kind of the impact analysis and assessment that we undertake in the first horizon. Then we step forward into the third horizon, which on the page in front of you is the middle one in blue. So this is stepping right the way forward into horizon three. We'll consider all of the qualitative and quantitative information that we've collated during the first phase of horizon one. We'll fully assess that to identify emerging themes and issues. And the approach really will be one, we hope, of disruption and innovation with a series of workshops, events and innovation opportunities. And the emerging themes and issues will then inform the emerging vision, the approach for the offer and potential new models of service delivery as we go forward. Collectively, we'll then agree a key set of assumptions regarding the new vision and approach. And this will inform the development of our overall renewal transition plan and provide clarity to each of the work streams in terms of the approach to be taken and what the expected outcomes from these work streams will be. Okay, so that's the visioning activity that we'll undertake. Then we step back into horizon three, which you'll see in the orange on the slide in front of you. Sorry, we step back into horizon two. Okay, so with the broad vision, the emerging models of operation and the approach for the offer. And when we step back into horizon two, that's where we really start the designing and the delivering. Work streams will receive support from HR, from finance, from business improvement with a range of innovation tools and techniques. An OD plan will be developed and I would really stress that all activity will continue to be underpinned by the ongoing engagement and involvement of our communities in the redesign process. Elected members will have a key and central role throughout, as Karen's already described. During horizon one, when we're undertaking the impact assessment, it's really important that we hear from you about the experiences and the impacts of the pandemic on your communities. And these are likely to differ between areas. So as we've, once we've concluded the presentation, we have got a few questions and a discussion that we would like to have with you. Then as we step into the visioning and horizon three, it's absolutely essential that you are all involved in shaping the strategic direction and the vision. And then as we step back into horizon two for the design and the delivery, elected members' role will very much be one of scrutiny and challenge. That will be key to ensure that we're delivering on the key milestones and the assumptions and any agreed outcomes that we've already made. I'm now going to hand over to Mark, who's going to talk about relationships and our relationships with communities. Thank you.
Thanks Claire. Good afternoon, everybody. I think the first thing that is important to say is it is absolutely vital that we work with all parts of the community on recovery and renewal. And this can't be seen as doing the council doing to the community. It must be a partnership and it must be seen as the council working with the community or we will fail at the first hurdle. But before we launch into recovery and renewal, we need to understand how the pandemic has affected people. We've, we have a lot of information so far on this in terms of the impact, but we need to gather more and that is the baseline, that is, that is the evidence base to form the basis of our plans. Also, I think, you know, we've all seen, haven't we, that life has been very different over the last 10 weeks and it's been really, really hard and really bad for a lot of people. But we've seen a lot of good over the last 10 weeks and we've seen some real positive work and different ways of doing things. So there's been lots of good practice which we want to capture and we want to build on. But we've also identified some challenges and we need to understand them and work through them as well. But we certainly want to focus on that, that good practice and the relationships that we've built so far. And we've also been supporting people that we've never engaged with as a council before. So again, we need to capture these new relationships and we need to build on them as well. And in terms of raising awareness, we need to engage as widely as possible and we will need to work with people to develop solutions to meet their needs. So that is absolutely fundamental, that again, it's this partnership and this co-creation approach that we want to take. And finally, we want to build an even better council, but this is not about delivering more of the same services, absolutely not. Building back a better council or building an even better council will be about delivering different services or delivering service differently. And it's all around helping communities, but it's about helping communities to help themselves as well wherever possible. And so that's all I really wanted to say in terms of the developer relationships. Other than it's absolutely fundamental that we get this right because we need to do this together, we need to identify the issues together and we need to work to develop the solutions together as well. So I'll just hand over to Charlene now, we'll talk a little bit more about the comms and engagement plan. Charlene.
Thank you, Mark. As Mark says, it's absolutely crucial that we engage with our communities and that includes our partner organisations, businesses, community groups, the people of Perth and Conroth and of course, our staff. So what we are doing is we're actually, we've produced a high level communications and engagement plan to set out exactly how we are going to propose to engage. And our member officer working group will be absolutely integral to this process in terms of taking that forward over the next few months. One of the first things that we're, we've started to do is a stakeholder mapping. So we're looking at, well, who do we need to contact? Who do we need to engage with? How do we best get feedback from them? How can we make sure everyone has an opportunity to get involved, to help us develop a plan for recovery and renewal and to help us think about ways in which we can innovate, change what we do, improve what we do and grow to build a better council? So we've started to break down all of the different sectors of the community. We have contact details for groups and we will be making contact with these individuals and groups as we go along. In terms of the what are we going to do in the stakeholder mapping, there's a number of different ways that we're proposing to engage with people. We're very clear that it's not a one size fits all approach to engagement. We want to give people different opportunities and allow for that individualism so people are doing what they're comfortable with. We have issued a staff survey and in addition to that, we have also been in contact virtually with teams. So we're meeting with, with teams and we're having those informal conversations to get feedback. We're also planning on an external survey and we will use the questions within that so we can consistently collate the data. And what we're going to do is we're going to speak to different groups, again virtually where we can, and use their representatives to gather their views. We have a number of different ways of getting in touch with people. So we have our partner organisations who can represent different groups of people. Again, social media is going to be something that we'll use on a regular basis to make sure we're communicating. Since the outbreak of this pandemic, we've had more, more comments and more interaction with the public than ever before. Our social media rates are higher, we have more people engaging with us in this way and we'll continue to use that as we move on. In terms of collating data, we're trying to keep our questions consistent so that we can do this in an effective way. And what we'll start to do is gather that qualitative and quantitative information as we move forward. I'm going to just pass over now to Karen just to go over some questions.
Thank you Claire, Mark and Charlene. Colleagues, Audrey, can you move on to the next slide please? So I need to be very clear that today is just an initial conversation around proposals to take forward recovery and renewal. There needs to be the Member Officer Working Group that will set out the way forward for this piece of work. And of course, you all have such an important contribution to make to this. So just some thoughts from us and I think what I'd like to do is just open it up for questions from elected members. But from your perspective, what's worked really well in terms of Covid that you would want to take forward at pace and maintain our momentum? What's not worked so well and what do we want to retain from previous ways of working where we can? And of course, the First Minister today made it crystal clear that by no means are we in any rush to move out of lockdown and it will take a long time before we ever have anything that resembles what we used to do in the past. How do we wish to invest or disinvest? How do we build on the capacity of our communities as part of the Perth and Conroth offer? What are the financial implications for both revenue and capital that underpin our medium term financial planning? And perhaps critically, what is our overarching strategic vision for Perth and Conroth and what strategic directions do we want to take forward? So these are the types of questions that I'd really like you to think about, have some discussion in your political groups and perhaps feed in through the Member Officer Working Group and your group leaders in the sounding board. So I'll just pause there and as I say, this is just very early thinking, but we do have a position of strength. We've seen that over recent weeks in terms of the way that people across Perth and Conroth, the elected members, the way that we've all come together to do the right thing for people in our communities. So on that note, I'll pause for questions and if I can turn firstly to councillor Wilson and sorry, just to clarify councillor Lane, you are quite correct, the next meeting of the council is the 24th of June. So councillor Wilson, please.
Thank you very much Chief Executive and thanks everybody for the presentation and the hard work behind that. My question really about sensitivity analysis going forward and how we pick up the vulnerability of either existing issues that have come out and Claire mentioned that, that, but also the unknowns. We spoke about the unknowns that we know there's going to be something about in terms of finance, but in terms of finding folk who've been hidden away in their homes and their communities, who've maybe just buckled down and thought, well, I just need to stay at home and do nothing. How, how do we plan to try and get in touch with some of these folk and elicit maybe what's some of their thoughts are because they might not have an avenue for articulation that's obvious?
Okay, thank you. And I think what I'll do is Sheena Devlin is available on audio, although you're not able to see her on her video. I may well ask Sheena to come in to talk to your question councillor Wilson from a children's families perspective, but also ask Gordon Patterson to respond in terms of health and social care. So Sheena, are you able to contribute from audio?
Thank you, Chief Executive, yes, I can. Thank you to IT colleagues who have provided support for me this afternoon already, much appreciated. In relation to the questions that you asked councillor Wilson, you'll appreciate that these were of particular concern to staff across education and children's services and indeed across adult services as well. And last week, we held a meeting of our extended management team to share, as we have been doing, issues that are emerging, shared good stories that we're hearing about and considering also the new ways of working that we've had to implement since the start of the lockdown and seeing how these might need to be continued to develop further as the situation continues. One of the things that I was very struck by at last week's meeting was from a number of our colleagues who work in services for children and people and family, who had reported that through their various teams were commenting on the remarkable resilience of a number of families for whom we have engagement with and contact with for a number of reasons, but actually who are doing extremely well, albeit in very challenging circumstances. Now, we absolutely recognise the stresses and the strains that this way of living and this way of working has put on families. But that was a particular note and those were the words that were used by a number of staff, that they had been really impressed and pleased to see just how resilient a number of people had been. Another comment that came through was that actually as we've adopted different ways of working, I describe it as we have been delivering our business and engaging with people, but not in a business as usual manner, in a business unusual manner. And as we have been doing that, it has meant that we have changed our approach in a number of ways. And one of the things that a number of families were commenting on was that by necessity, they were perhaps dealing with less individual organisations or people from a particular organisation and more and more of that was coming through one person. And they were finding that single person, point of contact very supportive and a means of getting a range of information and support from different organisations, but coming through a single conduit and they had appreciated that. Conversely, of course, we also know that some people have found digital exclusion to be quite challenging. And of course, what we have done across education and children's services is sought to identify every family for whom the children might not have had an appropriate suitable device or indeed wifi or data. And we have been providing that for those families. So not just for the children to use, but for those families to be able to use, not just to engage in the online learning that's being prepared, but also to engage in a range of other supports that we know are often ordered, offered through online means. So I hope that provides you with some reassurance about some aspects that you asked about.
Thank you, Sheena. Can I ask Gordon Patterson to comment?
Thank you, Karen, and thank you.
Gordon, I don't think we're hearing you. Okay, Gordon, are you available?
Sorry, I lost connection there, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, Gordon, thank you.
Sorry, apologies for that, my connection's obviously weak. And throughout this period, we've continued to provide essential services to people who are experiencing problems, for example, with poor mental health, people with substance misuse difficulties, people who have other degrees of vulnerability who may be at risk and older people and their families and carers. This has challenged us to find new ways of engaging and new ways of supporting people. But what it's also done is it's highlighted to us a number of ways in which we have been able to work in a much more integrated way. We've been swift and more swift in our decision making. We've been able to be as responsive as we could. We've seen the best of our staff in terms of compassion, professionalism, adaptability during the worst of times. We've embraced digital technologies. And I suppose really, really importantly, we have seen how community spirit has come to the fore and how volunteering and how people have looked after people in their own communities. For me, we need to be seen to be capitalising on that. We need to look at how that can all inform our new normal and how we design and develop our service offers going forward. I think we need to be particularly keen looking at the impacts on people's mental health. So for some people, that may have resulted in them demonstrating resilience and building their informal networks to enable them to cope with the additional challenges they're experiencing. But we also need to recognise there will be other people who will have a degree of anxiety, whose existing preconditions in relation to poor mental health may well be aggravated. And we need to think about how we can design new service models that enable us to connect with people physically as well as virtually. But to mobilise the third sector and to look at a raft of service offerings that can enable people to be supported informally before they need to turn to formal, formal and statutory services. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. So councillor Wilson, I hope that gives you a comprehensive overview of how we will be capturing the risks and vulnerabilities that will emanate as we transition through lockdown and its easing. And of course, those issues will form a major strand within the recovery and renewal plan.
Thank you to both for the very full answers.
Thank you. Councillor Roz McCall, I believe you have a question to Sheena, is it on this particular subject?
Yes, sort of. It was actually a follow up and thank you very much, Chief Executive. It was a follow up regarding, just came to mind regarding the device concerns and that we've managed in some way to actually provide IT in the form of hardware. But from that, it came to my mind that we would also have areas in Perth and Kynos that will actually have IT issues due to lack of coverage. And I was just wondering if we had any indication of how many people were isolated because of that lack of IT infrastructure and if any of those figures had come to light?
Councillor McCall, I don't have the information that you're requesting across the whole of the local authority in relation to IT coverage and any potential issues there. What we did gather was information from the point of view of education and children's services, so young people. And part of what we were able to do was in consultation with people far more expert in this area than I, they were able to look up what the kind of coverage was and then advise both on the kind of device, but also on the kind of data package and SIM cards for data or resources that could in fact provide wifi for those families. And so it was on the advice of people who know far more than I do about that, that we have been able to purchase that. So it's not just been a case of providing the hardware, it's also been a case of providing the wherewithal to be able to use that as best as possible. In terms of the actual numbers for whom that was a difficulty, I don't have that information from ECS' perspective with me today, but I can certainly find that out for later.
Thank you very much, that would be very helpful. I just, I just want to add, because I would imagine, and that is only my point of view, that if we're having issues from an ECS point where children can't get on to a virtual learning, there'll be similar issues in that area for many people in different walks of life. So it would be really interesting to get those figures as to how the IT and broadband are affecting our communities, if I could put that out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor McCall. And of course, there is a linkage to the economic recovery and renewal side of things in terms of the rollout of local full fibre network, in terms of the UK government broadband initiatives. So we need to take cognisance of that too. I'm going to move on with questions, please, to councillor Gray, councillor Tom Gray, please.
Thank you, Karen. My question really came in towards the end of Claire's presentation, which was gratefully received. And I was really wondering who in fact communication would be with within communities. And of course, following Claire, Mark and Charlene largely answered that question. Would there however be a role perhaps for action partnerships in communicating with, between the council and communities?
So thank you councillor Gray, I can answer that very simply. And of course, Charlene or Claire may wish to add to it, yes, there will absolutely be a role for local area partnerships and community councils in terms of how we take forward the recovery and renewal plan. But Claire, Charlene, I don't know if you want to add anything further to what I've said?
Yeah, if I could add something further, the, in terms of local action partnerships, they're very much on our stakeholder mapping and we will be making contact with them and looking to community councils for views and feedback also. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McCall, councillor Sheila McCall, please, you have a question?
Thank you, Chief Executive. If I probably more of a series of comments, I can do them now or come back later.
I think I was going to leave comments until we've done all the questions, please, if that's okay?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, councillor Jarvis, I believe you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'm not suggesting for one minute that we ignore the national picture for recovery, but I would just like reassurance that if Perth and Kynos has particular problems, they will be the first priority and not the national picture.
So councillor Jarvis, the reason that you were shown the national picture was really to set in context what's happening across the country. We will of course be taking forward Perth and Kynos recovery and renewal based on the evidence that we collect, the information that we receive through the impact assessment through the communication engagement plan. And we must do what's absolutely right for the citizens, communities, businesses and visitors to Perth and Kynos. So I hope that gives you reassurance. Because that's very reassuring, thank you. Thank you. Are there any further questions before I move on to comments? Okay, thank you. In that case, I'll move on to councillor Forbes, please, for comment.
Sorry, I thought someone ahead of me in the queue, but that's okay, I'll happily happily take councillor Barrett's place. The thing that, there's two things that have jumped out at me over the last eight or so weeks. The first one is that people in communities are willing to do far more for each other than I think anybody ever imagined they would be. Now, I know that's always been part of the Perth offer that we've talked about for some time. My concern is that when this is over, whatever over happens to be, that we may lose that that progress. And I suppose this is a bit of a question, do you have any plans to try and capture that particular good aspect of what's come out of this and keep it going for the future? Because we're going to need people to do stuff for themselves and for others after this is over. And the second point is on education. Now, the, the bad side of this I'm picking up is that parents are really struggling with having to perhaps work from home and try and help along with the education for their children. Now, I know that the date to get schools back into, into some kind of education is already set and trained and it's out of our control as well. But my comment on that is that we really need to try and get this moving as quickly as possible because I, at least every day I get contact from constituents saying that they're really struggling with the balance of doing their own job and trying to help with the education of their children. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. If I can perhaps just give some context and some clarity, the impact assessments will be able to capture what's worked very well. We're also asking elected members to feed in what you have seen working very well in your local communities. So there'll be a whole range of things that can feed into what's working well. In the context of education, again, I'll ask Sheena to come in on audio, please.
Councillor Forbes, you've correctly identified that there was an announcement that young people would return to school on the 11th of August. What I would say about home learning is we have been providing regular support through schools to parents and also from our educational psychology service and through our education service where we have phone consultations available for, for parents or young people or indeed staff who may be struggling with the current setup. And we have also provided some clear guidance in written form as to how people might find ways to support their children and young people at home. But the reality is that if you're working parents or in fact not working parents, but having young people not in school for the length of time that we've had so far, then undoubtedly that will present many challenges for, for all families. And so we are keen to be able to, when it is safe to do so and with the appropriate direction from Scottish Government, which will be based on the most up to date public health advice and scientific advice to get, to get young people back into schools. We are currently consulting with parents about what their preferences might be around what that model of what's called blended learning would look like. And likewise, we're also consulting with staff and head teachers to understand what's actually practically possible if we are to maintain things like physical distancing and which, which we will do, because that will limit the number of young people that can be in a room and therefore in a school at any particular time. So there's nothing we can do faster than the dates that are set for us, but we can continue to provide support and guidance for any family who would need it between now and the time of the new academic session.
Okay, thank you, Sheena. I'm going to make sure I don't miss out and councillor Sheila McCall, you have a comment to make my apologies.
That's okay, thank you, Karen. I have a couple of comments to make. My first comment is, thank you very much for the presentation and the plan on a page, one of my favourite ways to present something. It's very good. But in light of that, a few of the comments just around the practicalities. Delivering change such as this in a relatively short timescale is quite challenging. And I am personally fully supportive of an agile way of working and of delivering projects, but it's an entirely different way of working, not just for the staff of Perth and Kynos council, but crucially for elected members. So I think we need to be very cognisant of that fact as we go along to not only help elected members understand what that means, but also to make sure that we don't somehow diminish, even inadvertently, the role that elected members hold in terms of scrutiny and challenge and decision making and strategy and everything that goes along with an elected member. So I think it's very important that that is somewhere overlaid on that plan in a page somewhere because it won't work unless you can have elected members with you on this. I also think probably there needs to be some training, not just for staff, but for elected members too, on agile methodology and how it works in a public sector environment such as a local authority. In terms of some of the comments, on the developing relationship slide, you made a comment, there's a, the last bullet point mentions about encouraging and facilities, communities to become self-supporting. And while our communities have rallied significantly during this particular crisis, and I think it's been amazing the work that they've done and it works really well, I think that has been facilitated partly because of the nature of the environment we're in and the crisis we're facing, but also because volunteers are available and that they're furloughed or, you know, they're available to help in some other way. But I'm not, we need to be very careful that that is sustainable. We also need to be quite careful that, you know, any self, self-supporting communities is sustainable in the long term because very often it's driven by one or two individual people who are a driving force behind something. And I think finally on that point, we need to be very careful that the council doesn't abdicate its responsibility and duty of care, responsible foreign duty of care for particularly our most vulnerable citizens to local communities and therefore have a perhaps inconsistent service delivery and support across all the different parts of the council area. So I think there's a really careful balance needs to be struck there and that the council needs to retain that duty of care to deliver services to the employees. My last comment is, on a more positive note rather than cautionary, is that I'm very pleased, of course, that we want to take evidence of best practice, but I actually think that we should be stretching a bit further and that we should be looking to lead and not to follow in terms of to follow in terms of this recovery programme that we're setting out on. That's my comments, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you councillor McCall, without responding to every point that you're making in terms of comment, and I'd like to give assurance to all elected members that we are absolutely crystal clear that the role of elected members must be, as Claire rightly pointed out in terms of Horizon Three, to set out the strategic direction based on the evidence that comes from Horizon One and the impact assessment, but also to reinforce the absolutely crucial role that you all play in terms of the scrutiny and challenge that, that you bring under Horizon Two. So please be assured in terms of our commitment to working with you to achieve that. And councillor McCall, you raised some very valid points in terms of comments and I'll take those away and discuss with the senior team about how we bring those to bear in terms of the work in the Member Officer Working Group as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Barrett, you've been waiting patiently for some times, councillor Peter Barrett please.
Thanks Chief Executive, no problem about waiting, I thought that the previous day, two sets of comments were very helpful and, and positive. I was very pleased to see equalities and fairness underpinning the recovery response of building back a, a better council. In terms of, of strategic direction, I think that welfare and wellbeing and community cohesion need to sit alongside and with equal importance to economic recovery for the, for the future. I think we, we have to be really careful that as we embark on this process, that it's definitely not about taking back control. And I think what we've seen in terms of, you know, speed and agility, a risk-taking, a good enough, not gold-plated approach, and you know, we can't afford to, to, to lose any of that for the, for the future. I'm also conscious that the council has, has built up some really strong personal relationships with communities and with key community organisations. I'm thinking about the, the comm staff and the environment staff that are working with the Perth and Kinross Food Bank, the connections made to the community wardens, thinking even about the, the, the traffic wardens working with Letham for All, and I suspect that that's sort of replicated all across different parts of Perth and Kinross. So I think we need to use those personal relationships as, as, as one of the avenues or channels for communication with those organisations and with, with communities and not assume that it's got to be done by the, the professional communicator, because I think if we were to do, if we were to do that, we would lose an awful lot in the, in, in, in the process. And I think as well as asking, you know, what's worked well, we need to be asking those, those people and volunteers, what next and what more? You know, this should certainly not seem to be any sort of exit strategy type of interview, this shouldn't look like, you know, this is the end of the process, we want to pat you on the backs and that's your job done. Now certainly there will be some initiatives that have been tried and tested and decided that they, they, they're not what's required for the, the longer term, but I think an awful lot of what we will need for the future is about expanding the supports that have been successful and certainly not taking control of them, so.
Thank you councillor Barrett, your points are very well made. It's interesting actually, I was in a discussion this morning and one of the key messages coming out of that was that one of the things that's really worked, picking up the point that Sheena made around family resilience, is that people are not necessarily as stigmatized as perhaps what they were before because we're all rallying round and working together and it doesn't matter about your background, the context in which you live, we're all working to ensure that people are safe, that they have food, et cetera. So we really want to harness some of the good work that we've seen and I really like the point around asking volunteers and community groups about what next, not just an exit interview, that's a really valid point, so thank you. And councillor Purvis please.
Thank you Chief Executive and thank you for the presentation. I'll try to structure my comments around the questions that you posed towards the end of your presentation. I think there, there are some things that the council has done exceptionally well during this COVID-19 crisis. I think that getting out the business support grants so quickly is certainly something that many constituents have got in touch with me and I know that it's something that has been commented upon nationally. I know that while we were already doing quite well on this nationally, the further reduction in delayed discharge is something that has been very good as well. And then also some of the things that were done with communities and trying to bring together a database of the information through PDFs online is, is a very useful resource too. Now obviously some of these things are, will not be sustainable in the long term because we've had to redeploy staff and other services might have not been to the same level that we would usually have liked, but I think it really demonstrates that if we put our minds to it and sometimes if we're almost forced to find out a way to deliver a service more efficiently, that actually it can be done, whereas maybe in the past when the mind wasn't so focused, that has perhaps been more difficult. So I think that's certainly something that we should continue to think about going forward. And there are some things that haven't worked quite as well and perhaps there may be things that looking forward, the council should not be looking to take the lead on or do itself. I think in terms of the volunteer coordination, and this is no criticism of the, the staff on the ground who I know have worked very hard, I think perhaps sometimes community groups were far quicker to organise themselves than we in the council could ever be. And maybe we don't need to have a database of volunteers as a council ourselves and perhaps that it would be better to look at individual link-ups with specific groups who might be able to take on specific responsibilities, but they take on the coordination role for those activities rather than we as a council. I also agree with the point that was made, I think in the previous presentation by councillor Lane about the capital programme and the need to review all of those projects to ensure that, whether they fit with our current priorities, particularly given the large financial burden that that puts on the council with loan repayment costs. And moving on to some of the things that I think we should be looking at specifically in relation to the Perth and Kinross offer and the recovery and renewal, I think it's very welcome that this is something that we're looking to bring forward quickly. I am slightly concerned by some of the, the use of jargon and other things in the presentation that we were shown and hope that when we're communicating specifically with our communities, that that will be reduced. I think we need to refocus on, on Think Yes, I know the Chief Executive has talked about that before, and there are some really good examples that I can point to now since the Chief Executive started to talk about it, where Think Yes has been implemented and where it has had a real benefit for our constituents. But I think that there are still silos within the council and it's really important that we try and break them down so that if there is a project that requires working across multiple departments, that we can do that as efficiently as possible. And I also think we need to continue to have a focus on efficiency and best value. For me personally, that includes trying to reduce the burden of taxation on our residents as much as we possibly can. And also we have talked about this for, for some time, so I think it is important that we try and push it forward as soon as possible and take some of the points that other elected members have made, that it doesn't have to be perfect now, I think it's more important that we start in getting some early indication that we are actually moving in the direction of trying to involve our communities more in the decisions that we take and how we deliver our services. I also think it would be very useful, I note the points that have been made about elected member involvement in this, but that if there could be direct elected member involvement in the, the consultations with external stakeholders, given that this is a key strategic planning initiative, we often get summaries of feedback which doesn't quite have the same effect and give you the same information that you would have if you were in the room with some of these individuals and I think that would really help inform elected members' thinking when we do have to make some specific decisions about setting this strategic direction as part of this Perth and Kinross offer and recovery and renewal project. I think that's all the points that I wanted to make.
Okay, thank you councillor Purvis. Can I just pick up the last point actually, because it's remiss of me, I should have probably touched on this earlier. We have been discussing about the ways that we will engage more locally with communities and we did talk about elected member involvement in that, so I would really like to encourage that and we'll try and make that happen. And to pick up some of the other points that you've made, thank you for your comments around what's worked well and indeed your thoughts around volunteer coordination and community groups being quicker. Think Yes, Can Do is absolutely the attitude we want to see in the council and I think of anything over the last 10 weeks, there's a point of reflection for all of us to, to think about what actually made this happen, because we have seen, you know, significant changes in terms of behaviours and Think Yes, Can Do, and we want to keep that. So we'll certainly pick up all of those points. I'm going to move on now to councillor Stuart please.
Yes, thanks, sorry, I was just turning the camera back on. So I think I would like to echo a lot of, well councillor Purvis has just said, when you're in extremis, the need to find, necessity being the mother of invention, the need to find new ways to do things can prove a, a, a driving impetus where, where previously none existed. And, and some of the, some of the responses of the council have been, the, the two examples that councillor Purvis picked out, the, the business grant allocation and the driving down of delayed discharge numbers, both really great examples. And it's worth saying as well, of course, that Perth and Kinross was not, although it was high in Tayside, it was not high across the country nationally for delayed discharge numbers previously, but getting it even for, even lower is, is a great achievement. I, I do think that the point about elected member input into whatever is, into whatever is, feedback is being sought on would be useful. There is no point in, you know, going out to communities and asking a series of questions and then presenting those back to elected members as a, as the results of a questionnaire if in actual fact we would have asked completely different questions or we can see gaps in the questions, it would be useful to have that input upfront. All of the, the things that were said during the presentation about community engagement and consultation were absolutely music to my ears, inviting communities and residents and taxpayers of Perth and Kinross to give their views on what the council could do even better, what we do next. But we have had a lot of occasions previously where these things have been said and it's going to be absolutely key to keeping on board all of the goodwill that has been mentioned earlier in the meeting, all of the goodwill and the willingness to help, that I think councillor Forbes referred to. It's going to be key to keeping that on board, that we do actually listen and learn and don't just pay lip service to those principles. I think unfortunately there was an example given earlier, just in the, in the answers to questions on this, where we were talking about a consultation with parents on blended education. From what I've seen, the Facebook poll is a binary choice between two options of five hours a day or three days a week. That's not, it would seem to me a genuine consultation, trying to bring parents on board and develop a service and a system around what the consultation showed. It's just a binary poll saying which of these two options that we think we know better, if you like, as a corporate body than parents do, which of these two options would you like to take forward? It's not, and so I hope that when we're talking about consultation, when we're talking about community engagement, that we can do much better and, and take those lessons on board in the future.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Stuart, and I think undoubtedly we want to listen and learn and build on what we've seen across recent weeks in terms of the work of volunteers and community groups, but actually really getting into communities and finding out about what's important to our citizens and what their actual needs are, not just what we perceive them to be. So please be assured that's absolutely the intent and of course we need, and we have this opportunity to really change the way that we do things. So we must take this forward with pace and actually see the necessary changes that all our communities want to see and we'll be doing that with elected members every step of the way. And I'll now turn to councillor McDade please.
Thank you Chief Executive and thanks for the presentation, this one and the last one, I think you've been very useful. And I think particularly the finance one has given us all some food for thought in terms of the context for this presentation, in terms of what does the future of the council look like? And I think that had we known at start of March, the level of the pandemic and what we were going to be facing, we would have been, have faced with, you know, the situation we're now faced with in terms of significant cuts and a focus on statutory services. But just because we have to find money doesn't mean that we can't actually be innovative. And I think innovation for me is the way out of this and I, you know, I think others have talked about your approach to Think Yes in the past and I think that's absolutely correct. I think for me the speed at which council has made decisions over the past 10 weeks has been one of the biggest positives for our communities and I think that's something I would like to see us maintain going forward. Not obviously, I wouldn't expect us to be able to have quite the same speed of response, but somewhere a bit faster than our previous speed, I think will be absolutely essential really to allow us to deal with the financial situation we're going to be facing. And I would, you know, like to see us focus more on our statutory responsibilities in terms of refocusing towards those and doing it in an innovative way and perhaps look at how we support our communities to support them in performing some of the non-statutory functions which a lot of them have taken up in recent years and a lot of them have taken up in the last 10 weeks as well and showing they've been very capable of doing so, but that they require additional support and it's perhaps about where the council and other partners provide that additional support. And so I think for me, there's a lot of focusing around that and I think what other councillors mentioned earlier in terms of the capital budget, I think we really do have to rethink totally what the future of, what the future looks like really for Perth and Kinross in terms of not just this new context, this new normal that people are talking about, but actually in 50 years, what is Perth and Kinross going to look like? Because we are borrowing this money for 50 years, so what we are borrowing the money for should actually be something we're going to require over the next 50 years and not something that's for the next 10. And I think that we need to really look at the scale of that capital programme in great detail. So I think for me, just the agileness that we've been able to work and I think that's been really positive, I think we do have some big challenges ahead and I think the money situation is really the crux of the issue for us. And I think, you know, we are facing the biggest cuts, you know, to face councils in decades and we're going to have a lot of tough decisions ahead and I think we need to be open and honest with the public about that. I'm very appreciative that this session has been held in public so that they can see the scale of what we are facing and understand that so that we can have that frank and open conversation with them, because there is no point in sugarcoating this, it isn't going to be comfortable and it's not going to be fun, it's about working together so that we have a better future or the best possible future we can afford.
So councillor McDade, I absolutely agree and, and behind my decision to hold this meeting in public was exactly the point you make. It's really important that members of the public are aware of the, both the complexity and indeed the significant impact on council resources, but actually underneath that we need to make decisions and choices together about what the future of Perth and Kinross is going to look like and that must be led by both elected members and indeed members of the community. So thank you for raising those. Your points about speed of decision-making is an important one because I think what the last 10 weeks has shown is we've been able to make decisions very quickly. I take the point that we perhaps wouldn't want to maintain that. I take the point that we perhaps wouldn't want to maintain that pace of decision making, but we will need to think about how do we actually free up elected members to make decisions more quickly than perhaps what's happened in the past. So we've been working under emergency powers, and that can't continue forever. But we need to have a governance framework that is flexible, agile, and fleet of foot to enable us to respond to some of the innovation and transformation that we want to see, and the pace and momentum of change is taken forward in the way that we want as well. So thank you for those. I have no, sorry, councillor Illingworth, comment, please.
Great, thank you. I've got two comments to make. First of all, we actually don't know what this virus is going to do next, but I think we can take a lot apart from the way lockdown is being carried out in other countries, where we're actually seeing a continued drop in fatalities and infections. So perhaps the future isn't going to look as gloomy as we think it's going to look. My second comment is that we actually need to work pretty hard with the business community, because if you have a successful economy, then all sorts of things go well, more employment, gives us more finance. So I think we haven't heard a lot of mention of the business community this afternoon. I think it's important that we do what we can with it to actually get out of the way of business and let businesses succeed in their own right. So, yep, thank you for letting me say that.
Okay, councillor Illingworth, I'm sorry if it hasn't come across clearly to elected members that a key strand of the recovery and renewal plan will be our focus on the economy. And what we mean by that is our economic strategy, and that will be firmly focused on the business community across Perth and Can Ross. Because as you quite rightly point out, that when people have the opportunity to have gainful employment, when they have learning and development opportunities and develop their skills, then they contribute both in terms of the health and wellbeing of their family and their communities, but also in terms of back into the local economy. So please be reassured that that needs and is a front and central stream of the recovery and renewal plan. So councillor, I have no further comments in the chat box. So can I ask committee services to move to the final slide around next steps? The very last slide, please, colleagues. So we've talked a lot about gathering evidence today, and we've talked about the importance of communities, volunteers, our citizens, our businesses. And we've talked about the central role that elected members need to play in terms of the strategic leadership and direction in taking forward recovery and renewal. You'll see that as part of the Member Officer Working Group, we obviously want to have further discussion around the feedback from today, and then set out how we're actually going to gather feedback and enter into conversation, rather than just feedback, enter into conversation alongside you with our communities. Charlene mentioned we've got an employee survey underway, and we'll be doing some impact analysis in terms of internal and external as well. I doubt we'll have all the details and information for council, which should be the 24th of June, not the 25th of June, as stated, but we will be bringing forward the draft recovery and renewal strategy. It's clearly going to be an iterative process and will evolve as we become aware of more information or particular needs of particular communities. And we'll take that forward in that way. There'll be a draft communications and engagement plan. And sitting alongside that, there'll also be a financial update coming to council on the 24th of June as well, insofar as we know at that point in time. Is there anything further, councillors, you would like to ask or add to the briefing this afternoon? Okay, in that case, can I thank you for your contribution. I hope you found this helpful in the initial discussion. I think it would be fair to say that what we all want to have is an aspirational and ambitious recovery and renewal strategy, one that focuses on prosperity, on being sustainable, on being fair and equal for all our citizens, businesses and communities across Perth and Can Ross, where people will live their life well. So thank you, as I say, for your contribution this afternoon. I really look forward to working with you to make this happen. It is the Perth and Can Ross offer in action, and I truly believe that together with our communities and citizens, we will really transform the whole area for sustainability for the future and for future generations to come. So thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.